We will now come to order. We'll begin with the invocation by Mrs. Grubbs, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you so, so very much for all the blessings that you shower upon us each and every day. We ask that you be with our military, our police officers, all those that serve and protect. Please keep your hands up upon them and make sure they get home every evening to their family. Lord, I ask for special prayer for Officer Burnett's family as they go through a difficult time. Please be with them and give them some comfort. Lord, I also encourage, knowledge, and compassion as we deal with the business of the city. And I ask all this in your son, Jesus Christ, precious name. Amen.
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 Hi.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, valid, and individual, with liberty and justice
Good evening and welcome to our September 9th, 2025 council.
October 14th.
October. I was looking at the minute. I was going a little bit ahead of myself. This is October and it is what day?
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth. Okay. October 14th meeting. We'll begin with the roll call. Lauren.
Councilwoman Wade.
Here.
Councilwoman Boe.
Here.
Councilwoman Barnett Smith.
Here.
Councilwoman Grubbs.
Present.
Councilwoman Tester.
Here.
Councilman Myatt.
Here.
And Mayor Lenhoff.
Here.
Okay. We have a quorum. First, our agenda are some council minutes and some minutes from public hearing, special meeting. First one up is the council meeting from September 9th. That's where I got that. 2025.
I make a motion for approval of September 9th council meeting minutes.
Second.
Any questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a public hearing from September 16th.
I make a motion for a public hearing September 16th. Approval.
I'll second that.
Any questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a, we had a special meeting on September 16th.
I make a motion. We accept the special meeting.
I second the motion.
Any questions? See none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And last, we have the caucus meeting from October the 7th.
I make a motion for approval caucus October the 7th.
Second it.
Okay. Any questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Move on to the administrative reports. We'll begin with the city attorney.
The good news, we have not been sued. We've been threatened to be sued. I spent the majority of the month assisting Jessica and Kate and Lauren collecting taxes. And we've got some code enforcement issues and we're prosecuting, gonna be prosecuting those to get those done. But everything's been going pretty well from the legal side. Chris has gotten me busy on some easements and things. He's done a wonderful job getting the city straight. So that's about it.
Do you mind any questions for Mr. Ross? Okay. Move on to Public Works Director, Mr. Zerfusen.
Good evening. Most of our September was spent working back on Luke Lane, Luke and Brady. I think we have earned last like 250 feet to tear out tomorrow. And then hopefully in the coming weeks, regular asphalt will be in there to mill and resurface that street. So it seems like residents have been happy back there. We haven't had a whole lot of complaints. It's not an easy project back there with such a limited amount of parking. It's gone pretty well for us. The other thing we've been, we're concentrating on is crack sealing in Maintenance Area B. We're about probably 85% done with that. East Covered Bridge Drive and the little side streets off of it, we're just gonna skim over them pretty quick. Those will probably be in our resurfacing program in the next couple of years due to the condition. We would probably put down 20,000 pounds if we hit every crack back there. So sometimes it's better just to hold off until it's resurfaced so we're not wasting money on those streets. But we will be doing Autumn Road also. I was walking some sidewalks back there and I did notice that a lot of those street joints are starting to crack and unravel a little bit. So the best thing we can do for that is try to get those sealed up before winter time. Keep the freeze, freezing thaw cycles from making those joints any worse. Once we finish up Luke and Brady, we'll kind of start a little bit of a transition into our kind of fall and winter. But we do have quite a few blacktop patches and repairs that we need to make before the plants shut down. So we'll be continuing to stay busy on the roads as long as we can. Anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we hear Chief Wood.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Attached with my report, you'll find our activity report and investigative report for September 2025. First item is gonna be personnel. As we previously reported, October 1st, we had three officers retire and Luke to try to replace those people. We've interviewed about nine laterals, two non-certified people in efforts to try to fill those vacancies. We were able to select two new officers, one being Brian Birch. He's a former sergeant with Edgewood Police. Brings over 20 years of law enforcement experience, has a vast institutional knowledge. He aligns with our department's philosophy on community awareness policing. He's gonna be a true asset. Next is Officer Jordan Cummins. He's a second generation officer from Williamstown Police, has seven years of experience, very, very educated kid. In addition to his academic accolades, he holds multiple professional certifications such as specialized training in action reconstruction. He'll be the second reconstructionist we have on our agency. He's gonna be a huge asset to our agency as well. We're currently negotiating with two certified people and two non-certified officers. We hope to fill that last vacancy by the end of the month. It's, it's pretty promising. Next, I move to critical incidents. On Tuesday, September 16th, approximately 2:00, officers responded for an emotional crisis where a subject was trying to commit suicide by way of ingesting prescribed medications in efforts to overdose and self-mutilation with an edged weapon. Thankfully, our officers arrived on scene in a quick manner, assessed the situation, provided medical treatment, and ultimately the subject was transported for a psychiatric evaluation. On Saturday, September 20th, officers responded to 36 Eastern Avenue for reported stabbing. Upon arrival, officers met a victim at the roadside with a significant laceration to his arm and hand, significant blood loss, needed immediate medical attention. As the officers arrived, the female perpetrator fled into a wood line to a known homeless camp. We ultimately found her. Through the investigation, we learned that the female had stabbed the male counterpart with a machete during a physical altercation. Both subjects were under the influence of methamphetamines, and we have charges pending with the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. The last item on the critical incidents is Thursday 20, September 25th, officers were dispatched to the intersection of Garvey and Dell for a suspicious person call. Upon arrival, officers located the individual in question. He's a known drug offender. As the officer got out of his car, the perpetrator charged the officer, attempted to assault him. Thankfully, we were able to deal with the situation, take control of the situation, arrest this person without further incident. Thankfully, the backup was there pretty quick. Next is miscellaneous. Our new Dodge police vehicles are being outfitted as we speak. All three vehicles should be here within the next two to three weeks, pending no setbacks with equipment. It's crazy to think that we're still dealing with the effects of COVID, but it's reality. Parts and equipment, it's, it's a task. On grants, we have partnered once again with the Kentucky Attorney General's Office through a ballistics grant program. We've saved the city about $35,000 and obtained three ballistic vests, 19 ballistic helmets, and two ballistic shields. A couple of months back, I guess a month ago, the incident occurred at Boone County where the deputies were shot through the doorway. We have shields that take up that entire doorway that shine light up where we can see and protect it at a level three, which is, that was like a rifle round. So I'm very thankful that we were able to obtain those pieces of equipment to protect our staff and our people. And again, I hope to have one of our officers bring that shield and bring that helmet so you guys can see that before we end the meeting tonight. Unfortunately, he's at the jail. Training. I hold training in a high regard. It's a, it's critical that we train often and we train effectively for our officers' preparedness. As a result, we spent eight hours, a full day of range training, shot about 500 rounds per officer. That's a lot of shooting. During the training, we focused on high impact scenario exercises, precision shooting, active threat engagement, moving and shooting techniques, shoot, don't shoot techniques, which are high liability areas of concern that we train on at least twice a year. And again, those exercises are to stimulate high stress environments and enhance our officers' performance. We have very, very effective trainers on our agency. They take it very seriously and very proud of what they do. And again, some other areas that we deal with is decision-making, de-escalation techniques. That's high priority in our world that we live in, tactical communication, and officer safety and survival strategies. So that's all I have for my report. Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. And I'm just naive. I thought we kind of had gotten rid of the encampments with the homeless people. I knew that the one behind the old police building, and I kind of thought that was the last one.
Yeah. I, so we did eradicate the one behind the old police department. The one in Eastern, it's been an ongoing battle for the last two years.
Yes.
We get rid of it and they come right back. The mayor, myself, Chris, other ally partners are working diligently to try to solve that problem. We have a lot of stuff on the burners right now to get those things under control. A lot of ally partners are really stepping up and taking care of that and trying to help that situation. Hopefully, we get rid of it very, very fast.
Okay. Is there like other ones?
To my knowledge, it's the only one left we have in the city. I know it's an eyesore for some that live on Eastern.
It's not as much as an eyesore as the smell when you
Well, there's a lot of, there's a lot of factors involved, but we're trying to deal with that situation. And we've got really good partners in the community that's giving us play-by-play of what's going on back there and trying to help rid the problem as well. So I'm confident that we'll get, get the problem resolved. Just takes time.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you guys for your time.
Next, on the list, we have City Clerk, Katie's report. It's in your packet. Does anybody have any questions?
Well, we know the property tax bills went out. Yeah.
Yeah.
We got those. We all received them. Yeah.
Yes, we did. That's why she's not here.
[laughing]
Anybody have any questions?
No.
Okay. Next, we'll move to the city treasure. Jessica is here tonight.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I submitted a written report. In addition, in regards to that, this time of year is about 25%. We're generally a little under at this point because we haven't collected any taxes yet.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's fun. But we're not too far under, so that's good as far as income-wise. And the expense is under too, so that's good. And the only other thing I really have is we had audit field work done at the end, at the very beginning of October. They were here for only three days again this year. So yay for that. They will most likely present in January. Anybody have any questions?
Awesome job. Thank you.
Thank you.
I had a question.
Sure.
Because we had discussed the funds going out for new building.
Slaughter.
Yeah. Just to reassure us that those funds won't be available for that project.
So far, looking so, looking good. We're early in the year, but it should, it should play out well.
Okay. Just chucking.
Yeah, no problem.
You already got her tax money. She's, she wants you to have it. Yeah.
You got my money to go.
Before we move on, I like, I think this year with the audit, that's the first audit I've seen where they're gone before I even get here. And everything, they're usually looking for a lot of paperwork and Jessica and Katie, they're running the pickups. Didn't see that at all this year. I mean,
I was prepared.
Yeah. It was almost, I thought maybe we were in trouble. But she did such a good job that they were in and out. And it's, in my 15 years, I've never seen them go that quick.
Well, that shows that she knows what they're gonna ask for, and it's already there. So that's great.
Much more organized than this building.
Yes, yes.
Easier for me to be organized. I'm an organization freak. So that was good for me.
Okay. Next, we have code and zoning. Should have a list there from Josh and also from Rich Alip. Anybody have any questions?
I have yet to meet the personnel storey.
Yeah, we need to.
We would like to kind of meet that guy. Just wondering.
I could have Josh come in. Yeah. I think he lives in Edgewood. Josh, come in.
Just so we're aware who he is.
Well, we meet monthly and usually it's me, Chief, Chris, Katie, and we just go through everything. He, he showed, he brings in his pictures and so forth. And if we have any problem areas that he doesn't know about, we let him know. And then he actually has some problem areas that we didn't know about. So it is really, it is really good.
That might be interesting to have him at a caucus meeting, just so he could talk about what improvements have been made, what areas we need to be working on, so on and so forth. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Thank you. We could do that?
Yeah, we could, we could probably do that. No, we pay, we pay him. So I like when he's out on the street more than talking.
I would just like to meet him because I don't know who he is.
He's a good kid. And I think
Maybe, but if the council doesn't want that.
No, we need to bring him in and he wouldn't have a problem with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have recreation. You should have a report in there.
Yeah, don't forget about the Halloween party, October 25th from 4 to 6. And we're gonna do some trunk or treat. So if you want a spot, make sure you reserve it by October 22nd.
Well, I don't know if you've noticed the sign, but our church also, we're having the trunk or treat the very same evening. So
But you know, a couple of years ago, we had it on the same, and they just, the thorough place, it came down or vice versa.
I don't know that. So I think our hours are five to seven, yeah, four to six.
And don't forget, we're doing Halloween costume.
Halloween.
I'm gonna win this year.
There's no doubt about it. The Great Pumpkin's rolling around.
The Great Pumpkin is here. Good luck, Charlie Brown.
And I think, I think Brittany put it in a report, but we've had a couple of meetings already about Christmas. I think we have another one this week or next week. But we've, that was our first shot last year, and I think we're, we've got some really good improvements coming up this year that I think
So we're having it here again for the Christmas party?
Yeah. And we've got some extra things going on.
Yes, we know.
We're not telling.
It's a secret.
Okay. And last, we have the Community Center, and we have Lauren here. Lauren?
So really, the only thing I have for you guys outside of the report is I wrote down the wrong number of booked events for this year. So we actually have 43 events that have been booked from July through the end of this year. We are estimating about three the previous year. So that's pretty exciting.
And that's, that's just a half a year, too.
It is just a half a year. So
Very good. Yeah.
Can't wait. We'll be, we'll be looking at getting some more probably Christmas events, holiday events booked down there. We have a few people utilizing the space for Thanksgiving as well. And we do have the one group utilizing the Community Center every Saturday through the end of December. So that's, that's pretty exciting. They've done two weeks so far and they love the space. So that's awesome. And then Teresa's been continuing to do some really awesome programming up in senior services. Line dancing has been a very big hit. And she's continuing to work on getting some new stuff in there. That is all I have for you guys. Any questions?
On these events that, we also include like when the chief has a chief's meeting or the mayor's group, those we are holding down there. We're trying to keep this room here, especially if Greg Boss is walking around with food on the plate. Trying to keep this place pretty clean up here. So yeah, when she says that, we've, we've taken almost everything down there. Like I said, chief's meetings and the fire department headed for two days for training down there. So it's, it's being used.
I just can't stress enough how great I think that center is doing now. I'm just very impressed with all the activities that are being brought in. I mean, that's, that's good for the community. So doing a great job.
Okay. Oh.
Safety committee.
Yeah, I just found it down there. And it's way down here.
It only happens once a quarter.
We usually don't go three lines down.
Three, I know.
Okay. Safety Committee. Lauren?
Not a whole lot on Safety Committee this quarter. We met this quarter to go over a few incidents. Nothing really to report. Like I said, everything there, standard protocols were followed, but accidents do happen. No, no serious injuries. Everyone is recovered and back, back on regular duty.
Anybody have any questions? Safety Committee? Okay. I need a motion to approve the administrative report.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. For the mayor's report, just a few things, and these are kind of piggybacking off some of the things that we've already had. I think the chief and I think Katie helped him out. The retirement we had for the four officers, I think that was well organized. I think very professional. I think those guys will keep that in their minds for a long time. I want to thank you. I was really impressed by the retirement. While we're talking about retirement, the chief said, we already have brought two aboard. He did mention a name, Jordan Cummings. If that sounds kind of familiar, it is Todd's son.
It is.
It is Todd's son, yes. I think the chief called it second generation or whatever. But yeah, it's Todd's son.
Yeah, I did a double take on that one. Yep.
So, and like I said, it's, you know, I don't know a lot of cities could do what the chief has done because, you know, having four guys go out and within a month and already have two replaced, and he's kind of mulling around if he wants a lateral and then maybe send somebody to academy or whatever. But he's, he's, his reputation has, has brought some great people in here when he interviews them and so forth. And hats off to the chief for, you know, not missing a beat. You know, you have four people down, next thing you know, we got two and we're debating on the next two, and we got plenty to pick from. So he's done a great job with that. The salt barn, Chris and I, we've, you know, because it's emergency and so forth, we have, I believe, two companies that are kind of looking at it. And
I haven't started talking to these companies. One's, you know, working on some pricing right now, but we're being a little, 7:30 in the morning.
7:30 in the morning, huh?
Mm-hmm. I'll be there. Yeah, if, if
You're gonna be there at 7:30 in the morning?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm coming. I gotta see this.
I'm just, I'm the one best. Yeah. But we have, we have two companies and I believe they both, well, one's coming on site tomorrow and the other got lost today, was gonna go to the site and went to the wrong place. But moving forward, trying to kind of get this thing going before, you know, the winter gets bad for the winter because there will be a lot of pressure on that old barn with the salt and them taking the salt out and that, and that kind of adds to the maybe the, hate to say it, but the collapse of the barn itself. So we're on that. Community Center, just a little bit going back to Lauren, they've, they've done a wonderful job. And Teresa also, we've seen a pickup of the programs down there. It took her a while because she kind of, kind of, I felt like she started from scratch. And she has done a really good job down there. You're starting to get some regular people down there. And she's got some great ideas and she's going to places and getting ideas from other people. And it took her a while, but anybody, it wouldn't have taken more. And she's done a great job down there. The one I left off was Mr. Boss, and I have nothing to say about Mr. Boss right now. But I know, man, I'm on a roll on you. But anyway, does anybody have any questions? Any questions?
Hey, I brought him back safe and sound, BLC.
Yeah.
For over the
Now, yeah, of course, I was attached to that thing, holding on to that thing for dear life.
What made you say it?
Writing down with him. Okay, anyway, we'll move on. We have no general items. Council reports.
The only thing I have, and I know we touched base with this a few months ago, but electric scooters. I don't know if it, city ordinance or what, but these kids are flying in and out on the streets. And I know we talked about it and kind of the law isn't catching up quick enough, but one of these kids is gonna get killed just zipping in and out of the street on the sidewalk. And I, I'd hate to see it, knowing that it's an issue and not bringing it up. So I don't know if that's something we can discuss, but these kids are fearless on these things.
They go really fast, too.
And they're, they're going from sidewalk to crosswalk to in the street to back up. And I saw a post earlier today about the Kroger parking lot, which obviously that's not ours, but to and from school every day. They're just, they're moving. And I, is it, do they stay on the sidewalk? Are they supposed to be in the street? There seems to be a very
The sidewalk.
They're not supposed to be on.
Yeah, it's neither.
Yeah.
But every city is going through this right now.
Oh, yeah.
Every mayor has tried to figure out if there should be any kind of statute or anything. KOC has even become aware of it. And the legislative body is becoming aware of it. So they're gonna have to do something.
I don't know if vehicles are supposed to be on sidewalks. But is that considered a vehicle?
It is.
It is, yeah.
The scrotus.
I'll meet with, I'll meet with the chief and see if
Oh, yeah.
Hey, Chief? Chief?
Yes, sir.
Why don't you and I sit down and see if we can kind of
Come up with a normative, yeah.
I don't think there's, you know, specifically talking about scooters. I know.
But I see they're riding on them, they're standing on them.
Here's, here's what, it becomes a terminology issue. Anything, so people can't wrap their minds around electric vehicle, still electric vehicle, has electric motor. has electric motors, motorized vehicle. Same issue. His car is an electric car. He's got to abide by the same rules as we do and my gas car do. That's where the issues lie. They think because it's an electric vehicle doesn't apply. Right now, it's very loose. There's no different than a bicycle. So the laws are literally behind. And again, the only thing that we can attack it with is the city ordinance. We've had two people in the last three weeks get hit, literally. On my way to council today, a person was hit on a bicycle at Garvey and May. These things are becoming more obstacles and more challenging for us to govern. We have to take that proactive approach.
Because they do have the bikes that have the.
Electric bikes, too.
Some of these electric bicycles are going 36 to 42 miles an hour.
An hour.
And we're riding, zipping into, what Mr. Myers said, they're zipping in and out of crosswalks, sidewalks, side streets, alleys, and that nature. And now it's 50. They're getting. Yeah, well, Mr. Boss and myself will.
Yeah. Thanks.
That's all I got.
I have nothing at this time.
Lauren?
The only thing I have is I attended a municipal government league of Northern Kentucky in September, and the meeting had a presenter, Mayor Hatter from Fort Wright, and he made us aware of a lot of the cybersecurity threats that the cities are going through. He did a great presentation, very interesting. If you would listen to him, it would scare you to death, actually, about how they're attacking different areas, even small cities, and, you know, banks, different things. So I know that we're looking at our cybersecurity and stuff, too, in the city, but if you ever have a chance to listen to him present, he's, he's excellent. They also did elections for the committees, the executive committees. They did round tables. And it was very interesting. They are going to be having another, I think their annual dinner. I don't remember what date that was. That will be coming up. Anyway, that's all I have.
Okay. Joy?
Believe it or not, everybody's been on vacation, so nobody had any complaints. They just said that the vacation was too short. That's the only complaint. They said the vacation went good, but it was too short. I would like to thank the mayor, public works, especially Chris and his crew. They cleaned out the little room downstairs of the old city building, and they let the historical society move in. Mr. Myers came over and helped out. We got it all moved in, and we want to thank the mayor and Chris for doing all that work and stuff. We were very quick and swift. We got in there and got out. We did it very quickly.
I don't know if I'd call it quick.
It was quick.
They got in, they got out.
We got, yeah, we got in and out.
Poor Rusty.
Yeah, poor Rusty. Yeah, well, you know, we all have to sacrifice something. We do. And then, and I want to thank the chief and the police department for last week, they were being on vacation. A couple of your cops did a wonderful job by going up and down the street, and they took time to wave to the kids. The kids were like, like this, and the cops stopped the car and waved to them and talked to them and made their day. This is what you mean by community, more community, and the kids love you guys, so please don't stop this, because they love, they love seeing you guys, they love when you wave to them. And one of them even made a funny face to them and stuff, and they were like, they're human. They were, you know, they were engaging, you know, acknowledging the kid, and they made a funny face, and this kid's face just lit up. And the mother's standing there, this kid is happy and is, you know, he doesn't have nothing to be happy about, but at that certain minute, he was. So I want to thank you, and please tell your officers not to quit this. There needs to be more of it. Thank you so much.
Maria?
I just went to note that I was at a neighborhood function, and our street became filled, the neighborhood became filled with smoke. And so when it was investigated, there was a family that were burning things in their backyard. They were immediately notified, there's a burn ban, and so the fire went out, but the smoke filled everything. So just a note of caution, we do have a burn ban, and please be careful with everything. We haven't had any rain. Hopefully, we'll get some soon. That's all.
Thank you.
All right, last, last this time.
I have one, I do want to add one more thing on, onto my report, just an FYI, because I did not know this. When Mr. Hatter did the presentation, he was talking about people writing checks and how thieves would take envelopes and wash the checks and be able. Well, I found out that if you use a 2.7 pen, that cannot be washed.
Papermate.
So I thought that was very interesting. I did not know that. So if you are writing checks, you need to make sure you write a check with a 2.7 pen, and then you won't be too worried about people, if somebody would steal the check, they can't. And that's all. I know the bank gives the mayor pens, don't they?
Well, they give them to Jessica, and I steal.
Are they that kind? Yes. Are they?
They're a specific checker, anyone.
Yes.
Great. So I just thought that was really interesting, because I do write checks.
Because one, a few years ago, we had that happen here at the city, and we had to deal with all of that, and that was traumatic and awful. So I said, no, write your piece. Your piece.
That was, that's all my report. I just wanted to mention that, because I thought it was very interesting. I'll make a motion. We adjourn.
No.
I was going to be quiet and just see if it, if it went through.
Wade, Wade's going to do his report.
I withdraw that motion.
You know that.
You're so quiet.
Well, that, that 2.7 pen was just, you know, it was great. We could have ended on that. I had an OKI meeting this month. Look forward to the next one, and should it be having a Kent County PDS meeting coming up next month in November as well. I like to talk to people, and so I travel around and talk to people in the city, and I like to think that the city personnel, the interactions they've had with all the personnel here has been great. Jessica, I like to say any audit that goes three days is great. I deal with them all the time, so kudos to you. And then, Chris, also, people are pleasantly pleased with what's been going in the city with infrastructure. They see your guys out there working, working hard, so that's great. And chief, the sentiment of the residents that I spoke to, they, they said they feel safe living elsewhere, so good job. That's all.
Sorry. Go ahead. Sorry. I'd like to make a motion. We adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This meeting is adjourned.